Good evening. Welcome to the West Fargo City Commission's Special Meeting, Monday, October 29th. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, our God, and the miserable, the routine justice of our own.
Thank you. Before we start the meeting this evening, I am very pleased and proud to announce that recently, just as of today, Wallet Hub has named the city of West Fargo as one of the ten best small towns to live in America. Out of twelve hundred cities that were compared with U.S. populations of twenty-five thousand to one hundred thousand, we finished tenth, and they measure by forty different key indicators. So, the staff, to the residents, to our taxpayers, everybody's paying attention that we're a good place to live, so, very proud of that. Commissioners, I'd ask that you consider the approval of the order of the agenda.
Hello?
Thank you. Commissioner Simmons, is there a second, please?
Okay.
Commissioner Jervin, been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Regular agenda. Public hearing for confirmation of assessment list. Mr. Shockley?
Uh...
Mrs. Fisk.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President of the Commission and Commission members. We have several districts tonight that we have to hold our public hearing for regarding the confirmation of the list. As you'll recall, this is a time in which property owners who have filed appeals have an opportunity to bring those appeals in front of the Commission. We have a lot of districts to cover, and I'll briefly talk about each district. We want to hold the public hearing, close it, and then, I would say, for ninety-nine percent of them, other than item two, you'll probably just end up approving as presented. So, District Number 1292 is a sewer, water, storm, and street improvement district. It's located south of Twenty-Third Avenue East and west, uh, kind of in that westerly area. There was no protest filed for this district. It's been developed, was developer-driven. The total amount that's being assessed is nine-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars. There were no objections at the Special Assessment Commission here, uh, meeting, and we received no written protest. So, you would need to open a public hearing, ask for any comments, close the public hearing, and then, assuming no protest for that district, move to approve it as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. We'll close the regular agenda and move into a public hearing for storm, uh, water, sewer, water, storm, and sewer, uh, street improvements for Districts Number 1292, 1295, thirteen-hundred, thirteen-oh-one, thirteen-oh-three, and thirteen-oh-four. Is there any public comment?
Mister President, it's, uh, we should take each district separately, so it'd be just for twelve-ninety-two, and then we'll move on to the next district.
All right. Is there any public comment on twelve-ninety-two? Is there any public comment on twelve-ninety-two? Is there any public comment on twelve-ninety-two? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Moving on. The Sewers, Water, Storm, and Sewer Improvement District, twelve-ninety-five. Is there? John?
Well, we'll need to make a motion to approve twelve-ninety-two.
Thank you.
In a second. Sorry.
So, each, we can't do them together? Like, I mean, we used to sometimes put them together.
If the Commission wants to do all of them at one, you certainly could. It's, uh, I didn't want to presume how the Commission wanted to handle it, if you want to handle them all at the end with one, since we haven't received any objections for them.
We'll follow precedent and do them individually, please. Is there a motion on twelve-ninety-two?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jervin. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, uh, the Sewer, Water, Storm, and Street Improvement District, twelve-ninety-two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business is a public hearing on twelve-ninety-five.
Uh, thank you, Mister President. This is for an improvement district that's on the north end of Brooks Harbor. Uh, it was one-hundred percent petitioned by the developer, includes water, sewer, storm, sewer, streets. Uh, the total amount being assessed is four-million-six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Uh, we did not receive any objections at the Special Assessment Commission hearing, and we received no written, uh, protest.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. We'll move from the regular agenda into the, uh, public hearing for District Number twelve-ninety-five. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comment on twelve-ninety-five? Is there any public comment on twelve-ninety-five? Hearing none. Public hearing for twelve-ninety-five is closed. Commissioners? What is your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Thorstedt. Thank you, Commissioner Jervin. It's been moved and seconded to approve Sewer, Water, Storm, and Street Improvement District for twelve-ninety-five. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is Sewer, Water, Storm, and Street Improvement District for thirteen-hundred. Mr. Shockley?
Uh, thank you, Mister President. Uh, this is also for residential, uh, infrastructure improvements. This is for development that's to the far west of Costco and on the east side of the Cheyenne, uh, in that new, uh, development area. Uh, there are, the total amount being assessed for this district is two-million-three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. Uh, we did not receive any protests at the Special Assessment Commission, and no written objections have been received.
And who put this forward? Developer?
Developer was petitioned in by the developer.
We'll move, uh, close the regular agenda, move into public hearing for the Sewers, Water, Storm, Sewer, and Street Improvement District for thirteen-hundred. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing or hearing none? District Number thirteen-hundred is closed for the public hearing. Commissioners? What is your pleasure?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Jervin, thank you. Motion. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thorstedt. Been moved and seconded to approve the Sewer, Water, Storm, and Street Improvement District Number thirteen-hundred. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is Sewer, Water, Storm, and Street Improvement for District Number thirteen-oh-one. Mr. Shockley?
Uh, thank you, Mister President. Uh, this is for industrial and commercial area improvements. Uh, this is the area that is over, close to what was commonly referred to as mosquito flats area. Uh, it consists of, uh, stormwater, uh, streets, uh, sewer, and the total amount assessed was four-million-three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. It was requested and petitioned in by the developer. Uh, at the Special Assessment Commission meeting, we did not receive any protests and no written, uh, appeals have been filed.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. Again, we'll deviate from the regular agenda, move into public hearing for Sewer, Water, Storm, and Street Improvement District Number thirteen-oh-one. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing none. Public hearing for thirteen-oh-one is now closed. What is the wishes of the Commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. It's been moved...
Second.
Been seconded by Jer, uh, Commissioner Jervin to approve thirteen-oh-one. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries on thirteen-oh-one. Next order of business is the Sewer, Water, Storm, and Street Improvement District Number thirteen-oh-three. Mr. Shockley?
Uh, thank you, Mister President. This is also for sewer, water, storm, and street improvements. Uh, these were petitioned improvements by the developer. Uh, this area development is south of Thirty-second, uh, to the north of those, uh, new townhome development, those kind of three- and four-story townhome developments, uh, and to the west of the Costco development. Uh, the total amount being assessed is one-million-two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. Uh, once again, this was, uh, petitioned. We did not have any objections at the Special Assessment Commission meeting, and we feel, uh, we've, uh, received no written protests regarding this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. We'll deviate from the regular agenda and move into the public hearing for Sewer, Water, Storm, and Street Improvement District Number thirteen-oh-three. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing no comments? Public hearing is closed. Commissioners?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Jervin, it's been moved and seconded to approve Sewer, Water, Storm, and Street Improvement District thirteen-oh-three. Any further discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business, uh, we'll deviate again from the regular agenda and move into public hearing for the Sewer, Water, Storm, and Street Improvement District Number thirteen-oh-four. Mr. Shockley?
Uh, thank you, Mister President. This is for District thirteen-oh-four. This involves the Eaglewood Sixth Edition. Uh, these improvements were petitioned in by the developer. The total cost of the amount that's being assessed out is two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. Uh, there were no objections, uh, received at the Assessment Commission, and no protest.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. We'll now move into the public hearing for the Sewer, Water, Storm, and Street Improvement District thirteen-oh-four. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing no comments, thirteen-oh-four. Public hearing is closed. Commissioners?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Thorstedt. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Jervin. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Sewer, Water, and Storm Street Improvement District thirteen-oh-four. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is, uh, Storm Improvement District Number forty-sixty-one. Mr. Shockley?
Uh, thank you, Mister President. Uh, this is for, uh, Infrastructure District three-thousand-and-one. This was... Too many districts tonight. Uh, for forty-sixty-one, uh, it is a, uh, storm sewer lift station. Uh, this was on the west side of Cheyenne, as north of Thirteenth, uh, Street, uh, to end about Second to about Eleventh Street West. Uh, we didn't receive any protests at the Assessment District, or the, uh, Special Assessment Commission meeting, and we have received no written appeals. The total amount, uh, that is being assessed through the district is one-million-six-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. We'll move from the regular agenda into the public hearing. As for Storm Improvement District Number forty-sixty-one, is there any public comment?
Um, John, I think there's some rules to this, is there not?
For, this is forty-sixty-one. This is different than, uh, forty-sixty-one.
Oh, right, okay, I apologize, Mister Chairman.
Problem?
Is there any public comment on forty-sixty-one? Is there any public comment on forty-sixty-one? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, what is your...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jervin. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Simmons. Been moved and seconded to approve the Storm Improvement District Number forty-sixty-one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is the Infrastructure Replacement for District Number thirty-oh-one, three-thousand-oh-one. Mr. Shockley?
Uh, thank you, Mister President. This is for a reconstruction of, you know, underground infrastructure. Uh, this was conducted around First Avenue and extended north, uh, and south slightly to Fourth Street and to Ninth Street. Uh, one person did appear at the Special Assessment Commission to ask questions about how their property would be treated in the future. Their question was, uh, responded to by the Special Assessment Commission. I don't think they had any additional questions following that. Uh, we have not, uh, they didn't make a formal objection at the Assessment Commission. They just had some questions about how their property would be treated in future in relation to this district, uh, and then we've received no written protest. The total amount being assessed out for this district is three-million-fourty-thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. We'll move from the regular agenda back into the public hearing for Infrastructure Replacement of District Number three-thousand-and-one. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Jervin. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Infrastructure Replacement District Number three-thousand-and-one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business. City Commission Discussion on Special Assessments for Sewer Improvement District Number forty-sixty. Mr. Shockley and Mrs. Fisk. At this time, I've got, been advised by legal counsel, and I have to refuse myself. So, we'll ask Deputy Mayor Thorstedt to take over.
Go ahead, John. Uh, thank you, Mister Deputy Mayor. Uh, so, tonight, uh, is just a discussion and perhaps an ultimate decision on the appeal that you had for forty-sixty. Uh, you've conducted the public hearing and listened to the objections, uh, and closed out that portion. Uh, my advice is you do not want to go back and reopen that up. Uh, it was properly noticed. People were given an opportunity to present their objections, uh, so the public hearing portion is closed. Uh, the, pursuant to the direction given by the City Commission, uh, I went back with, uh, the assistance of, uh, Tina and the City Engineer, and we sorted through the assessments that had been filed, uh, and we also made changes to the assessments, uh, for the property that is intended to be platted, so that was changed. So, we readdressed, uh, we recalculated the properties that, uh, will, so that it will be treated as platted. Uh, we did not make any other adjustments until we received direction from the City Commission. So, there's really a couple of things. Number one, there's about thirty-thousand dollars from the, uh, realignment of those equivalent units. Uh, one of the decisions through the City Commission is whether or not you want to, uh, reassess that thirty-thousand dollars to the, uh, regional portion of the benefit, uh, or if you would like to use some other source of revenue to pay for that. Uh, the other issue is in regards to the appeals regarding the local, the amount for the local assessment. Uh, we will need some direction and ultimate decision from the City Commission how you want to handle that regional, or the localized assessment. Uh, you'll recall the, uh, local assessment is ten cents per square foot. Uh, as a commission, you can certainly, you can adjust that ten percent, or ten cents, however you would like. I can, uh, I can assist you there. You can't exceed what was established as the benefit by the Assessment Commission, so really, your upper end is, you wouldn't want to adjust above ten percent, so you want to just stick with the ten, uh, ten cents, and you, or you could go lower than that. And then, if you do make adjustments to that number, the other question is through the City Commission, uh, how you want us to treat, take care of that, uh, local, uh, the cost for the localized assessment. Uh, I would characterize the appeals as really having two bases. The first one was, uh, make sure that we're treated as if we're platted lots, which we resolved that, and the other one was really, uh, as you heard, uh, feeling that they did not, uh, benefit to the extent of ten cents per square foot. So, uh, what I would suggest after you make your decision, uh, that you would make your motion to approve it, however, whatever your decision is, uh, and direct us to finalize findings of fact for each of the appeals, uh, so that we have each, each appeal categorized, because there's multiple appeals, and we have a long list of them if you have any questions, but they're really pretty straightforward. They were really into those two groups, and I think we've resolved the first item, so we just need direction on the second item from the Commission.
Does, do you have anything to add, or is that it?
No, not this time. We just have questions.
Okay. Right, uh, as, uh, John mentioned, we had the public hearing on October fifteenth, so the appeals and the objections, uh, to the assessments were already received into record, so we won't be going there tonight, but, well, Commissioners, do you have any comments or any, uh, thing you'd like to add to the discussion?
I do, I have a few words. I'd like to say, Commissioner Thorstedt. Um, I guess first, I want to apologize. I want to apologize to our staff, John, Tina, Chris, he, Tim, Larry, Melissa, and all the other members who were here at the last meeting, um, especially to you, Dustin. Last meeting went over the line. You're our staff. You're all here to implement the policies, policies and procedures that we put in place, and you're just the messenger. You know, you're not the one that our, our citizens should be taking it out on. We're the ones that make the policies and procedures, so when you step up to the podium, talk to us. We're the ones that are going to decide that. Uh, when we allow people to come to the podium and look directly at you, Dustin, and make accusations about your character and your truthfulness, and point at you and call you a liar, that has gone too far, and that's exactly what happened. We did nothing. We sat here and didn't say anything. I felt as a Commission, I think we all know that we should have stood up and stopped that right there, and we should have moved on. That, that's over the line. That's not called for in this community. Um, so again, I'm truly sorry that it went that far, and I guarantee you, next time it will not. The next time, and for everybody, our audience that knows, again, when you come to the podium, you know, you're director, you come here to meet with us, you want to talk to us, you talk to us. Don't, don't talk to the staff and call them names and, and, and just, it's, it's not right. It's wrong. So again, please, in the future, come to us, and that's all I have to say, Commissioner.
Um, I'd like to say a few things. Uh, first off, I'd like to start out by thanking, um, everyone who has put so much time and consideration into this, that is both our city staff, our Special Assessment Committee, and many of you that are here tonight and who have attended, um, numerous meetings on this topic. I will say that in my first four months as a Commissioner, I've probably put more time and energy into this, uh, specific topic than anything else so far, which it's, uh, definitely been, um, a learning experience. So, I want to break my thoughts into just a couple of quick, um, parts. First, uh, this topic has certainly highlighted a few areas where I believe the city can do better. Uh, I know that at some point in the past, in order to help lower costs, which is a good, good strategy, the city lowered its expectations around communication of these projects up front. Um, that needs to change. You know, we should be striving to control costs, certainly, uh, but we must communicate and engage our residents, um, the people that we're asking to pay for these projects in, in, in a way that, uh, hopefully brings these issues and, and discussions on the front end of a project instead of on the back end. Secondly, I'm guessing most of you are like me, um, this is going to sound strange until, until I make my point, but, you know, I go to a doctor because I believe they know more about medicine than I do. I take my dog to the vet for the same reason. When I ran a company for thirteen years, I spent way too much money with Corey Elmer at Vogel Law for his brilliant legal advice, um, because I knew that he was, he knew more about legal issues than myself. These are experts that we trust. Uh, similarly, as a, as a City Commissioner, I believe it would be dangerous to discount the work of our professional and reputable outside engineering firm based solely on opinions. Um, simply hearing that someone has stood in their driveway for twenty years and knows which way the water goes is certainly a belief that I know that, that they passionately believe in, but it is, does not qualify as more factual than the hydrology study that was done at the, on the onset of this project. Therefore, I feel a need to accept those numbers as, as factual in, in information. Now, to be clear, none of these professions I mentioned, including those of engineering, um, is done without air. Perfection might be what we strive for, but it's not realistic, because, you know, we're all human. Uh, with that said, I see, you know, I do see two mistakes that, that we need to consider and, and fix at some point. First, the decision to not put in the culvert, um, which was, you know, I think a decision made in the field was, um, simply wrong. Uh, you know, that's a, that's an important part of, of this system, and I, you know, believe that we need to make sure that that gets addressed and fixed, um, next spring at, at the earliest possible time. Um, secondly, I disagree with the logic of excluding Nelson Acres from, from the local assessment, uh, because from, you know, numerous conversations, I've, I've, I've stopped in your office, Dustin, you know, Nelson Acres does have a local benefit, although it is, you know, a small, a smaller local benefit based off the hydrology than, than, the, the people living on the other side of Cheyenne Street. Uh, you know, excluding them based off of the concept of, you know, that they might potentially redevelop in the future, to me, is, is, but, you know, I'll simply say they might potentially not redevelop in the future, and I don't think, excluding based off of that makes sense. So, based on those numbers and a desire to not kick this down the road another year, um, you know, I, I guess what I would, uh, put on the table and suggest tonight is that we approve the regional assessment as defined, um, and approve the local assessment with a change from ten cents a square foot down to nine cents a square foot, which is reflective of the ten percent, which, Dustin, please correct me if what my, if my understanding of the math is off, but that was about, um, what, what I believe you had said, that we take that remaining amount, uh, of, of roughly ten percent of the overall local benefit cost, which is something slightly in, in excess of fifty-thousand dollars, and I would propose that we take that out of sales tax, so solely due on, um, to the fact that delaying the entire Assessment District another year to properly assess that, that one cent a square foot to Nelson Acres would add a significant, um, interest expense in, into this project. And, and, and on the point that you brought up, John, the, the thirty-thousand dollars, or approximately thirty-thousand dollars, I guess I would add that into this, in, in, into that amount as well, and propose that we take that out of sales tax, um, which is, you know, not something that we typically do from my understanding, but I believe in this situation, I thought, I, I think we would, it'd be nice to move forward and put this behind us.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I would make that as a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a, uh, motion and a second on the, uh, on the table, uh, regarding the proposal. I don't know if everyone got that down, what, uh, Mr. Jervin proposed. Um, prior to going to vote, I just, a couple of comments as well. After hearing all the informations come back, I, I agree with a lot of points that Commissioner, uh, Jervin has made. I, I see it more as a regional project, not so much a local, and I had a hard time discerning why Nelson Acres would not be treated the same as these properties when they're like-type properties and been there some, for some time. I don't know where the ones, you know, the one cent comes from, you know, how, how you arrived at that particular number, if it should be something lesser than that, and also...
Dustin, maybe you could speak to that. Sorry to, okay, interrupting Commissioner Thorstedt, but I, that's based off of the conversation I had had.
Yes, uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, the, uh, the ten percent number is based on a, um, uh, total flow percentage that comes from Nelson Acres, so albeit, there's a hundred-and-sixty acres out there, but, um, the amount of flow that enters into this system is about, um, I'm not going to get to the exact number, but it equated to about ten percent of the local flow. And so, based on that, um, we were able to apply, well, if, if we treated that as a local to begin with, that would have equated to about, um, it's just shy of one cent per square foot would have been their local assessment. So, uh, again, it's, it's based on, when you take the total four-hundred-and-some cubic feet per second of flow that is going to the system, again, that's based on a five-year, uh, peak, uh, discharge. The amount contributed from that Nelson Acres development was, uh, ten percent. So, again, applying the math, working it out, it equated to less than a penny, which over the hundred-and-sixty acres was roughly that fifty-thousand-dollar number that Mr. Jervin re, referred to.
Okay, and as you suggested, uh, I think you said the thirty-thousand as well as the fifty, are you suggesting... Okay, and as you suggested, uh, I think you said the thirty thousand as well as the fifty, are you suggesting eighty thousand as far as the contribution for all?
Yeah, you know, I think instead of changing the numbers at this point anymore than, than deducting that one cent in, on, on the local assessment, I, I, I think I am most comfortable with, with rolling that in with that approximately fifty thousand. So, yeah, it'd be eighty, roughly somewhere between eighty to ninety thousand that we would contribute out of sales tax.
What has been, uh, it's been our policy in recent years to utilize some sales tax towards, uh, arterial streets, you know, larger projects like this, you know, this is a regional project and we're also talking a local benefit here. But, what percentage have we roughly done on that? Did, did we have any, I don't know if we have policy or if it's just a matter of what we decide at the time. Um, just for comparative purposes, again, I view this primarily as a regional type project. We do have a history of supporting those with sales tax dollars, which I'm supportive of. But I just want, wonder if we're eighty thousand based on this two point three million, whatever it is, how that would compare to other projects, for instance, Cheyenne Street and other...
Okay. Um, historically with sales tax, the city has never funded regional, um, stormwater projects, regional, you know, just regional lift stations, things like that. We've only used a sales tax to help circumvent the cost of widening and constructing larger arterial roads. And we've used the, um, outage of a million dollars technically a mile is what we've done. That's what we did on Main Avenue. That's what we're proposing on Thirteenth and Ninth. That's what we're using on Cheyenne Street. Um, the commission, you know, for instance, if there's an additional item that you want to add that you feel the citizen shouldn't pay for, whether it's some type of amenity or whatever, there's been small amounts of those that have been picked up by sales tax. But historically, we've never done any regional lift stations or stormo stations or anything like that with that money.
However, those street projects include those features within them.
They do.
Yes, yes, we are supporting them. It's not like we don't or can't.
It's, it's not that you can't change the policy. The policy has always just been that we only do it on road, we've only used it on road projects. And this wasn't a road project.
Brand, they have sewer and water, sewer and water features within the road projects as well.
Right, but usually not a regional lift station or a pond.
Well, I think maybe the point that Commissioner Thorsted's trying to make is that, uh, for example, with Fortieth Avenue where we did apply the million, million dollar sales tax, uh, for that mile, um, that district also included the construction of, of the first phase of this retention pond that is service, uh, serving the system. So, um, when we assessed out that Fortieth Avenue district, that cost did include the installation of that pond. So, uh, I guess you could say that the sales tax helped fund the overall cost, which includes that storm, or that, uh, storm retention pond.
I guess my question on here, I like, as he's proposing, I guess, to cut to the chase is, should we put in additional sales tax dollars? I guess is my question besides the eighty thousand. Is eighty thousand a good number? I'm sure the people that have a local assessment of any type are, I think it's a, not a good enough number, but, um...
You know, the thing with that Commissioner Thorsted, then I actually got assessed to not long ago too. I'd like to come forward and get some help, help too. And that's the way, that's what the, everybody else is going to say. They all want, we're setting the precedent if we turn around this...
Well, we're setting the precedent of helping out with sales tax.
Put my name on, on that list to come forward because I don't want to pay mine either.
Well, and I think, you know, I think the precedent that we're setting based off of how I defined it isn't that we're contributing... I don't believe the precedent is necessarily that as a strategy, we're contributing dollars to a local assessment. We are in this case, but, but it is specifically because Nelson Acres should have been brought into it. And to delay this a year, it probably costs us as much in interest as the fifty thousand dollars is, um, you know, to, to kick that can down the road a year. And I think, so, so I realize that this would be paying money from sales tax to cover a local, um, component of the assessment. But I think the precedent here is, is that you are simply trying to get the dollar amount right so that we're not charging the people that are paying that local assessment more than if they, than they otherwise would have if Nelson Acres had been in it. I think we're just fixing that. It's not that it's our new strategy to throw those dollars into local assessment. Therefore, I don't think we should do more than, than, than what makes it be that appropriate cost. Off the map.
As far as, talk about having to delay this project for a year, what's the timetable? Why would we have to wait a year to revisit funding on this?
The assessments, uh, so if, if the only other option would be to send everything back to the Assessment Commission and the time period to get the assessments in, it have to be in by November first. And so, you would add a full year, uh, so we'd have a year of capitalized interest plus instead of having assessments payable over twenty-five years, now they would be payable over twenty-four years. And so, you would be adding costs to the assessments and also, um, making the annual payment higher for those people who chose not to prepay their assessment. That, that would be, that would affect the whole district, not just the local. But it clearly is better to make a decision tonight on it, one way or another.
I think Commissioner Thorsted too, the thing we, you know, we, we tend to forget is we're sitting up here, but the Assessment Committee actually went with thirty percent. They negotiated and brought it down to the ten and I agree thirty percent was probably high. But they're the ones that brought it to the ten. Now, we're trying to negotiate again. And I just think that's a fair price, nine percent to me, when it started at thirty.
Yeah, well, they did make an adjustment, I grant it. I agree with Commissioner Jurtevich says, we, I think we have to look at the whole process and, and revisit it and come up with probably a way, probably a better way of doing things. I, I think there's a lot to learn from this. I'm not saying I'm fully satisfied with, with, what they're offering as much as the sales tax. I personally think it's more of a regional thing, a lot of the issues about, in my mind, and I'm not an engineer and I don't have to have an engineer background to have an opinion on it. But, I think because of the Fortieth Avenue and the Cheyenne Streets and all that stuff and the development as the area as a whole, you know, one of the comments, we had to replace the way we used to pump the water out. We had to build this because growth and volume of water has, has created the need for this. So, I trust that's, in the engineering sense is true, but to me that was not, this particular local area that caused that, it was the whole area. And that's why I look at it more as a regional. But, we do have a motion on the table, uh, from, uh, Commissioner Jurtevich and a second from Commissioner Simmons. So, I guess we should, uh, take action on that vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Like I said, I think, uh, Commissioner Jurtevich, your comments are right on spot on. We need to visit this and not get to a point to where we have a situation like this where it's
Good job.
drops on people and they don't understand what the process is and, but frankly, we don't understand the whole thing ourselves either.
Thank you, Commissioner Thorsted. By rules of a special meeting, only the items that are posted on the agenda, uh, can be discussed. So, at this time, I have here a motion for adjournment.
So, vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a sec, uh?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Jurtevich. Been moved to second, we stand adjourned.